Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 10 Williamson County Commissioner Meeting. The first item on our agenda is always the invocation and the pledge to the flag. Tonight, both will be given to us by District 9, the invocation to be given by Commissioner Matt Williams, and the pledge to be given by Commissioner Chaz Morton. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we ask for your guidance and providence as individuals and as public servants as we contemplate to make decisions for our community. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't know, roll call is next, but we'll see how that goes. We've got a new system here, new microphones, you may notice. There's no button for you to push. That will be done by Ms. Diane Giddens here. I believe your screen is up now. If it is, if you'll hit your sign-in button. Okay, record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Oh, the roll, sorry.
Yes, sir. Twenty-three present with one absent. Commissioner Ricky Jones absent.
Next, we have approval of the minutes. There was a new set of minutes that was emailed out. They're also at your desk. Everyone should have received those. I'll entertain a motion. A motion made by Mary Smith, seconded, went away already. I think it was Commissioner Tonac Cliff who seconded it. Are there any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, boy, this is all jumping ahead. Press your yes button if you approve of the minutes. Press your no if you do not. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Oh, twenty-four yes, zero no. Commissioner Jones just joined.
Anyone for Citizen Communications? Okay, we do have Citizens Communications. If this individual's ready to speak, Mrs. Tara Blue.
Good evening. I have my board members with me. I want to give you a little history about myself and our daycare. My name is Tara Blue. I am the Executive Director of Community Childcare located in the Williamson County Services Complex on Folk Street. Community childcare is a not-for-profit daycare that has provided affordable and quality childcare for the past 52 years. Let me give you a little history about our center. We originally started on Spring Street inside the Franklin Housing Authority. Twenty-four years ago, the former director, Hattie Baines, was approached by a county employee by the name of Al Ritter. He told Mrs. Baines that he would love to see the daycare moved to the complex area that was being built within the year. He also stated that the daycare would be in a safer location than where it is now. Currently, at the location where we are, there's a probation office, a DUI court, and a mid-Cumberland Corrections Office located next to our daycare. I have met with the county officials to address my concerns that I have with these offices being next to a daycare. One, arrests are being made outside. Citizens that must report are brushing their teeth in front of our entry door. Citizens are changing clothes in the backseat of their cars. And when there's a DUI class, students are all over the parking lot and are dismissed during the closing hours of our center. Parents are not happy with what they see. When I met with the county officials almost three years ago, they since have placed three parking stalls that can be used for CCC patrons only. The maintenance department is always attentive to our needs. It takes a lot to run a daycare, and we must adhere to DHS rules, the fire department, and licensure rules, and we appreciate the men that tend to our building. But we are also very grateful for the annual funding we receive from the county. But I do not feel like I'm being heard. When I asked, is there a possibility for the probation offices to be moved, I received no discussion but a certified letter from the county attorney stating that they are not going anywhere. With all the violence, mental instability, and danger that we face in the world today, I just don't understand how it is okay to have these offices next to children, the community childcare, and the Boys and Girls Club. Almost daily, we have at least five to 10 persons yanking on our doors, mistaking our center for the probation office. Yes, danger can be found anywhere, but just last Friday, a stranger jumped the fence of a daycare in Nashville and made it inside the building. Luckily, no one was hurt. I have tried to be creative with installing security devices with the assistance of the property management, and for that, I am grateful. But at the end of the day, these offices being next to a daycare just do not sit well with me, my board, the staff, the parents, and the community. Why wait for something to happen? What about the children? I realize these citizens must fulfill their requirements by reporting to these agencies. By not being judgmental towards them, it just does not give a positive atmosphere for our children. So please consider moving them to another area in the county where children are not present. I hope these concerns do not put our lease in jeopardy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That ends Citizen Communications, as we have no one else who has signed up, so we'll move on to Communications and Messages. We have four late filed resolutions. These are resolutions we're hoping to hear tonight, in part because we do not meet in August, and they are mainly to receive or apply for grant funds within the deadline. So we're hoping to hear those tonight, and they are in your agenda. If we do not have an objection, we will hear those. I see none. In addition, one resolution is being removed. Planning Director Michael Madison is asked to pull Resolution 723-1 for tonight, and it will be advertised for the September Commission Meeting. That brings us to Reports of County Offices, Ms. Phoebe Riley.
Mr. Chair, and good evening. In your packet this evening, you will find a memo addressed to each of you. It is actually from me regarding the state's Three Star Program. The program was developed in 1980 by the Office of Economic and Community Development, designed to help communities take advantage of economic development opportunities throughout the state. There are three requirements for membership in the program, which are outlined in the memo which you have in your packet, one of which is to provide a copy of the county's debt management policy, which is also included. It is attached, should be following in the memo. There have been no changes within the last year regarding our debt policy. The other two requirements that you will see listed on the memo is to acknowledge, both from our office and letting you being able to be acknowledged and notified, that an annual cash flow forecast must be prepared and submitted to the Comp Trainers Office each year. We do that prior, once a year, when we issue or submit our balance or our budget to the state for approval. It is also a process that we do is required with each bond issue. So I just need to make you aware also that that is one requirement also for the Three Star Program. The final requirement that I need to make you aware of for the Three Star Program is that each office in the county is required to develop and document a system of internal controls, and those systems are reviewed by county audits during our annual financial I've included in your packets the month-end reports for the month of May. Staff and I are currently working on year-end balancing and closing for the year, so I do not have those numbers for the month of June at this moment to report, but we'll report to you back on the final balances for June 30 and fiscal year '23 at our next meeting. The previous tax collections for the month of May were down slightly for the month of May compared to April. Total collections for the month are $880,000. It does appear, based on the numbers that we are seeing as we are balancing for the month of June, that has taken a turn back up, and we are projected to hit that million-dollar mark for the month of June. At this time, that's all I have to report. Is there any questions or concerns?
Questions for Ms. Riley. I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Filling in for Jason Golden for the Schools Report is Rachel Farmer.
Golden could not be here tonight, but he asked me to pass along two quick things for you all. Summer school has gone really well through the month of June. We've switched hats, and three weeks from today, teachers report back for work. And so we're gearing back up, starting the new year for that, and students report on August the 4th. And that's all I have to share. We have one resolution before you tonight. If you have any questions, just let them.
Questions for Mrs. Farmer. We've got one. Commissioner Mary Smith.
Just a question. Do you have an idea what their enrollment looks like for this coming school year yet?
Don't. We did not send out return-to-schools quest from parents until this week ago, weekend before last. And so we don't actually have all of the information yet. It looks like it's going to be on track. It'll be right around. It's at least, we have 42,000 enrolled, and it will be a little over that.
Looking good for the teachers, the open spots. Are we going to have, okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sanford.
Is Arrington Elementary going to be open on time?
That is the absolute goal. They are working night and day to make that happen.
Other questions? I see none. Thank you. Next, we have the Hospital Report, Mr. Phil Mazuka.
Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us to give you a quick update. Mike and I will give you an update on what's going on at the hospital, and he'll give you a financial report. Just a quick project update. Right now, we continue to work on our next phase of our emergency department, and that includes our eight-bed Behavioral Health Pod and two exam rooms that are being renovated. Once it's done, we'll relocate the security office out of our emergency room conference room that was built. We're tracking for the end of September for this part of the project instead of mid-October like I reported last time, so it's a little bit ahead of schedule. And then the next phase after that for the ER is a continued renovation of the exam rooms. We will have a total of 37 exam rooms by the end of the year. So right now, we haven't gained any rooms yet because of the renovations, but we'll go from 28 to 37 by the end of the year and ultimately 43 by May. For the OB unit, we're working on four labor, delivery, and recovery rooms. They'll be completed in the third week of September, followed by five more LDRs by December 26th. In the West Tower, our framing and sheathing of the exterior is progressing really well. Exterior brick and stonework are making good progress, and that'll be completed by the end of January. The windows are being delivered, and installation will begin over the next two weeks. The West Tower glazing and dry-in will be complete by mid-November. Framing continues on all the floors of the West Tower, as well as mechanical installation, and the project is still on schedule for May of 2024. With that, Mike?
Thank you, Phil. Good evening, everybody. As I usually do, start on the stats. The stats are pretty much consistent with what we've had on a 13-month average. Admissions were just slightly below where we were when you combine the adult and the peds. Surgeries were pretty much flat, and then the ER was about 274 over budget. We generated just about exactly what we budgeted to do on net revenue, $26 million. The good thing is, we actually collected more than that, and we had a record month, as you can see in the collection side. We had almost $29.5 million in collections, so things just aligned perfectly. We had 22 days, collection days, so that worked out for us. From a day's cash on hand, we're at 240, our bond money, 98 for our debt covenant, so that's a really good thing. We still struggle with purchase services. We still struggle with agency nursing and so forth, temporary staffing. So if you look at the P and L, that's where we're off. You know, we've been able to make up a little bit of that money on our interest income that we're making, and we budgeted to be down in that line a little bit, but we, I think, just like the school and everybody else, we're still struggling with that. So that's our challenge. Overall, we made $1.3 million on a budget of $400,000. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Genesee. I have one here from Commissioner Guffey.
It's actually for Mr. Mazuka or Mr. Genesee. The Mental and Behavioral Health, the eight-bed facility, is that, you know, we've seen evidence of an uptick in adolescent pediatric behavioral and mental health concerns. Is that unit set to also serve that population, or is there a special secure portion for mental and behavioral health for pediatric?
Right now, it's for adult. Pediatric will still be handled in the pediatric ER itself, and they do a pretty good job there managing that in the pediatric ER. But right now, the new pod will be for adults.
Any other questions for either Mr. Mazuka or Mr. Genesee? I see none. Thank you. Next, under Reports of County Offices, Chair of our Rules Committee, Mr. Paul Webb. Commissioner Paul Webb would like to address the Commission at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Rules Committee at our recent meeting brought up the time and format of the Commission's annual budget meeting, and because the term is any of the Rules Committee, we decided to ask the Commission members for input. And so if you have questions or suggestions about a different or a better way to do the annual budget meeting, then contact Budget Director Riley, or you can send your questions through the Chair. Some of the things that you might want to know is, the Tennessee Controller in the last couple of years strongly recommends that budgets be approved before July 1st at each year. And let me emphasize strongly. And the Budget Office, our Budget Office, needs the month of June to close the books and get things ready. As you know, this year, the school system, which is a key component of our budget, didn't have the numbers for the new TESA items until the 1st of June. Their getting funding depends upon the legislature and when the legislature adjourns. So that is something that's not going to be much earlier than the end of May or part of June. And of course, the trustee who reports on the taxes, they have to have that report in by the middle of June. So some of the questions that we discussed were, well, let's just do it all at the first meeting of June. Well, that's not practical for a lot of different ways. So I just wanted to bring that out while I've got the floor, Mr. Chair. And so some of the suggestions that have been discussed were move our budget meeting to as late as we can in the month of June. We already do it the last Monday. Move it later. And then go back to a full-day meeting or start at noon and go till we end and have some of the appropriations after we approve the budget like we did prior to this change. Those are just suggestions. What we'd like for you to do, because as you know, the Rules Committee ends next month, is we will have a new Rules Committee, and we want to bring that to the new Rules Committee when they meet in September, early October. So in the meantime, if you will discuss with Ms. Riley some of your ideas, if you have any questions, get the information you've got so that when the Rules Committee meets, they can hear what your suggestions are, make sure that it fits with what the Controller's Office is asking, as well as what Ms. Riley feels like is appropriate for her and her staff to have the budget numbers ready. So that, Mr. Chair, is just a report to the body from the Rules Committee with no action to be taken tonight.
Questions for Mr. Webb. Seeing a few here. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you. As part of the Rules Committee, one of the concerns I brought before the body is that we meet twice in June. A concern I brought up is that, given that we have law enforcement here, we have department heads here, that's two meetings a month that everybody's being asked to attend, where previously, we did it once in July, and it was a day-long meeting. And so the question was raised, can we replicate that in June so we're not meeting twice in June? I know it's also difficult for some with vacation schedules to vacation around two separate Mondays in June. And so that was the beginning of the conversation and the thought process. So to echo Commissioner Webb, we're looking for feedback to see if there is an appetite to look at going back to one meeting in June, and if so, do we potentially do that the third week of June or the fourth week of June? Do we do it as an all-day meeting like we used to? Do we do it as a half-day meeting? Again, to just kind of address some of those concerns, and they may be concerns that are only affect a few of us, or they may affect all of us, but we just wanted to start the conversation. So please provide your input. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering if Phoebe has any thoughts on what challenges does this present to her as the Budget Director? For us having this meeting in June, what suggestions might you have for us that you would prefer to see that would make your job easier?
I ask that we do not set the budget that first month, that first meeting of June. It is very difficult. If you think about it, we have to work backwards. So whenever you set that budget day, whether at this point was the 26th, everything has to go back another month. We started the process this year, January, which means we'll need to start, if we move it to the beginning of the month, we lose that whole month of timing just for how long we have to run in the paper. So when you're thinking one week, you need to really think about that's moving everything forward two to three weeks. When you're thinking about moving it to the first of the month instead of the end of the month, you're talking about a whole other month. So we're starting the process meeting with department heads and such back in December. That would push us back to December instead of January. Nonprofits already turned their information into us end of January, February. Again, that pushes everything forward a month. Also to keep in mind, I know this year went quick, and I am grateful, and do not want to jinx that, but we were able to pass the budget in a very, very short time, I think to everyone's surprise, especially mine, which, again, I am very grateful. So it was less than an hour meeting. Since I have been here, that has not been the case. Since I have been here just to pass the budget has taken an all-day meeting. So think about when you're consolidating these two into one meeting, you will have to address business in the current fiscal year, because we will have things that have to be wrapped up at June 30 so that we can conclude June 30 business. So that means any of those interest payments for debt, if we did a refunding and we had to move up some payments for debt, things like that. All of that has to be done at that June meeting. So you're going to add that, and then you're going to turn around and split, and then start talking about the new year. So you will have to wear two hats for that meeting. Again, that's obviously your decision, but I would ask that if you were going to do one meeting, it not be that second week of June. It is just extremely difficult for all of us, not just myself, but all the departments, all the outside agencies that have to take part in that process.
Ms. Sturgeon.
Just a request. When the budget is published to the public in the Herald, could we make it a policy in the future to make sure that all the Commissioners get copied that budget at the same time? I'd have constituents calling me about the budget, and I Googling, trying to find it because I didn't even know it was out there. So I think it's important. Actually, ideally, we should see it before it goes out to the public, but I'd be happy to just get it at the same time.
I will look into the timing of that for you. To be honest, my days have ran together, so I don't know what day everyone got what at this point. I do know that we sent those out when it went, before it went to Budget Committee. Okay, so we've been... That went out to the Herald, the newspaper, okay.
I mean, you don't know what you don't know. I mean, I didn't know. Kind of got blindsided on that one. But the other thing is, is you're saying that you think it takes too much time to go through the business usually to get it all done in one day in June?
Yes, ma'am. If you're going to combine both June fiscal, June business for that fiscal year and the next year. Again, this year, it went quickly, but I have said in a room where we, that has taken an all-day process. an all-day process, especially if there is some controversial items. If you remember, I think our June meeting, we were here till at least my bedtime. I don't know about everyone else's. So if we have another one of those in June, we will not be able to get, and we cannot adjourn. If it puts on the agenda and says we're going to pass the budget, we're here to pass the budget. If that means we watch the sunrise together, we do. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think if you have a suggestion or a strong opinion on this, direct those to Mrs. Riley. I think the spirit of this is just to make sure that all 24 commissioners are able to attend the meetings. I know June is a big vacation month. At the same time, we have to be mindful of each department and Ms. Riley and the Controller's Office. So we have a limited window there and a limited amount of possibilities. But if you have thoughts and suggestions on how you would like to see those meetings handled, then again, send those to Ms. Riley.
I will be happy to hear and tally those votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Reports of County Offices? Seeing none, we'll move on to elections and appointments. First up, we have a Library Board of Trustee, three-year term expiring 7 of 26. Term expiring is Terry Hood. Nomination is Terry Hood. Proper motion made by Commissioner Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Any questions? I've got a question from Commissioner Paul Webb.
We're going to address this at a later resolution, but the library policy is all terms expire on June 30. And I didn't catch this when we put this out. So we, I would go to council, how do we address that? Just make a note that the term expires on June 30, 2026?
Okay. If everyone is fine is noting that as a typo, this term will expire instead of 7 of 26, 6 of 30. I'm sorry. 6 of 26, yeah. Any other questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of this nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
24 yes, 24 yes, zero no.
Nominee, motion passes. Nominee is accepted. Now we move on to our rotating committees. This is the time of year where we take a short recess and we break up into district pairs. So Districts 1 and 2, Districts 3 and 4, Districts 5 and 6, and so on. We'll get together for a 10-minute or so recess to make your nominees for Rules Committee, Steering Committee, Human Resources Committee, and Parks and Recreation Committee. In your packet, you should have received a list that shows who is eligible for which committee and who is not. Use that as a guide. And then when we reconvene in 10 minutes, I'll ask that one spokesperson from each paired district recite the nominees for each committee, and we will vote on them individually, each committee individually. So with that, we will take a short recess of 10 minutes. Has everybody had sufficient time to select their nominees for each committee? Assuming so, we will take each committee one at a time. We'll start with the Rules Committee. I will call out for the district pairing, and if the spokesperson for that district pairing will give us the nominee for that committee, we'll write those down, and then we'll vote on them as a whole. So starting out with Rules Committee, Districts 1 and 2.
Lisa Hayes, Commissioner Hayes.
Lisa Hayes. Districts 3 and 4.
Greg Lawrence for that one.
Rules would be myself, Greg Lawrence.
Okay. Districts 5 and 6.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Mary Smith. Districts 7 and 8.
Commissioner Chris Richards.
Commissioner Chris Richards. His name wasn't added for this, was it?
He's fake.
Yeah.
Call me fake.
Districts 9 and 10.
Commissioner David Landrum.
Commissioner David Landrum. And then for District 11 and 12.
President-elect Steve Smith.
Commissioner Steve Smith. So for the Rules Committee, we have Commissioners Lisa Hayes, Commissioner Greg Lawrence, Commissioner Mary Smith, Commissioner Chris Richards, Commissioner David Landrum, and Commissioner Steve Smith. I'll entertain a motion. We'll voice this one. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hayes, a second from Commissioner Lawrence. Any questions? This will also be a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our Rules Committee for the next year. Next is our Steering Committee. Districts 1 and 2.
Commissioner Herbert, Chief Lieutenant Herbert.
Commissioner Judy Herbert. Districts 3 and 4.
Commissioner Mason.
Commissioner Mason. Districts 5 and 6.
Commissioner Sanford.
Commissioner Sanford. Districts 7 and 8.
Drew Torres.
Commissioner Drew Torres. Districts 9 and 10.
Commissioner Megan Guffey.
Commissioner Megan Guffey. And Districts 11 and 12.
Commissioner Brian Clifford.
Commissioner Brian Clifford. So for the Steering Committee, we have Commissioners Judy Herbert, Jennifer Mason, Greg Sanford, Drew Torres, Megan Guffey, and Brian Clifford. I'll entertain a motion.
Brian Clifford?
Got a...
Second.
Clifford.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got a proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Lawrence and seconded by Commissioner Tonacliff. Any questions? Seeing none, if you're in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our Steering Committee has been appointed. Human Resources Committee, Districts 1 and 2.
Commissioner Ricky Jones.
Commissioner Ricky Jones. Districts 3 and 4.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Streser.
Commissioner Streser. Districts 5 and 6.
Commissioner Nations.
Commissioner Nations. Districts 7 and 8.
Barb Sturgeon.
Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Districts 9 and 10.
Commissioner Matt Williams.
Commissioner Matt Williams. And Districts 11 and 12.
Sean Iola.
Sean Iola. So our Human Resources Committee nominees are Commissioners Ricky Jones, Pete Streser, Erin Nations, Barb Sturgeon, Matt Williams, and Sean Iola. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Mary Smith makes the motion, seconded by...
Commissioner.
Commissioner Sanford. If there are no questions, if you are in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our Human Resources Committee is established. Parks and Recreation Committee, Districts 1 and 2.
Commissioner Hester.
Districts 3 and 4.
Commissioner Graves.
Commissioner Graves. Districts 5 and 6.
Commissioner Webb.
Commissioner Paul Webb. Districts 7 and 8.
Commissioner Tonacliff.
Commissioner Tonacliff. Districts 9 and 10.
Commissioner Chaz Morton.
And Districts 11 and 12.
Commissioner Bather.
So our Parks and Recreation Committee nominees are Commissioners Betsy Hester, Jeffrey Graves, Paul Webb, Tom Tonacliff, Chaz Morton, and Brian Bather. I'll entertain a motion.
Is a move?
Motion made by Commissioner Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Webb. If you're in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that is our rotating committees. We now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval. This one is through the tablet Commissioner, motion made by Commissioner Tonacliff, seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I assume you're ready to vote. If you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
24 yes, zero no.
We have no unfinished business, and the zoning resolution that was originally filed has been withdrawn with the potential of coming back in September. So on to appropriations. With our first resolution, Resolution 723-2, resolution requesting and intend to fund for $16,252,0690 for the Williamson County Board of Education 2324 capital needs. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. School Board was 11 for, zero against. Budget Committee was 3 for, zero against, as amended. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is, resolution is for an intent to fund the Board of Education capital needs in the amount of $16,252,690. And I also want to do a motion to amend to 13 million. The Budget Committee agreed on this, that they felt like the remainder, the other 3 million, could be taken out of the fund balance like the rest of the departments. And I think Superintendent Golden has also submitted a breakdown of how they plan on doing it if it's the 13 million.
We have a proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Any questions on the amendment? We have a question or two here. First one up is Commissioner Barb Sturgeon.
Thank you, Jerry. I just want to understand how you came up with 13 million.
At almost 3 million in their fund balance extra, and we felt like if they wanted the extra amount, they could take it out of their fund balance.
So wasn't this subject to anything? That they were...
Mr. Tonacliff.
Did I miss it somewhere where Jason Golden's, how he's going to divide that money up? Is it in the packet?
Right.
It's this one right here. Separate, sorry.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, I have a question maybe for Rachel. I guess it is Rachel since Jason's not here tonight. And I hope I don't put you on the spot here, but this is a question that's been brought up many times over the years, and I'm sure you've probably dealt with this before, but there's been a real reluctance on the part of this commission to vote for technology equipment that will be obsolete within five or six years and put that on a 20-year bond. So is there a plan, if we do this tonight, to pay this back from the WCS budget on a short-term basis to cover some of that technology? Or do you just plan on us voting on this to put the whole thing on a 20-year bond?
A lot of the technology that you see within this is networking, which is going to last longer than three or five years. It's the wiring to get what we need in order to support some of the other items, including some of our safety items that we need. And so as far as is there a plan to pay it back? I wouldn't necessarily say pay it back, but we have reduced in areas for things like computers. In looking at the reduction, I figured that would be one of the questions, is one of the areas where we did reduce from where we originally started. And so some of those items that we felt like we may be able to pull into our general budget, we're paying for it out of that as opposed to this. That's the game plan.
The computer portion, is that about 3 million? Okay. All right, that answers my questions.
Mr. Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rachel, thanks for sending me the line item breakdown this morning. I appreciate it. I went back and was just comparing what we approved at the May meeting. And at that time, that proposal was amended for 3.1 for safety and security, which was approved in capital expense. Now we're asking for another 2.2, which is fine. At that same meeting, we amended it to not do the networking, to not do the computers. We approved a $2.1 million appropriation for HVAC. And I see on this one, this is for 1.4. So I'm trying to just understand the additional needs today versus what we approved in May. So, I'm trying to just understand the additional needs today versus what we approved in May. And then, similar to what Commissioner Lawrence just asked, is I see two lines. One, it's vehicles for $225,000, and one that says other capital outlay. So, can you just help us reconcile that?
Sure. I'll start with the last one first. The vehicles are related to maintenance. We're picking up with additional schools. We're having to pick up some additional hubs, and so, we need additional vehicles for that. We also have, I believe it is a supply truck. It's a larger truck that we're having to replace. The other capital is furnishings within all of our buildings. So, we repair what we can, and then at some point, we do have to replace. And so, that's anything from students' desks to cafeteria tables. And so, that is an annual item we put in to be able to supply those kind of purchases. We came with... To you, two different... We have two different capital items that we bring before you. One is what's on the five-year capital plan. Those are the known needs that we have and that we've planned out. The second, the annual capital items are things that have come out throughout the year. We may have emergency situations that occur. And so, we didn't necessarily have them on a five-year capital plan. And so, these are items that we have now identified that in the next year, we're either going to have to replace, repair, but they're still capital items. So, what you passed previously, you did make some cuts. These are not the same items. These are different items. Did that... Does that help?
Commissioner Richards.
Any of these that cut from $16 million to $13 million affect the safety and the security at the buildings?
The line items, if you looked in detail, safety is listed, but what's the items that are safety or were related to key fobs within interior doors in the classrooms. And so, not necess... The reason for the fob itself as opposed to a key, this... Every room can be secured. The fob allows a quicker, and it also allows for us to then identify who used the fob to open a door. So, it's a security item, but it is not putting someone's life necessarily in danger.
But would that be under technology?
It is part of the technology.
Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Mary Smith.
Yeah, just to clarify, because I got the list here. So, we are not going to be taking financing or taking debt out for the computers. That's something you guys are going to be able to pay for out of your fund balance. So, everything else on that itemized list is really what we're looking to, yeah, to fund. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Tonacliff.
I just kind of want to go on record as saying I totally disagree with cutting the fobs. I just think that is a huge security thing, having talked to Fletch at schools and how important that was to him. I think cutting those out of the budget is a major issue for me, and I just want that to be out there because that's... Security is... Should be our utmost importance right now based on what's going on. Thank you.
Commissioner Erin Nations.
So, I don't disagree with what Commissioner Tonacliff is saying. Nobody wants to cut that. But you're not telling us that that would be the specific line item that gets cut if we reduce the budget, right? Or reduce the request?
Back and talked and knew that we were going to have to cut $3 million out. That is one of the... Not necessarily, but that is one of the items that came up that could be reduced because it's not... It enhances security, but it does not totally secure.
So, just to follow up, why would the schools not use their fund balance to go ahead and pay for those fobs?
That's why, potentially, we will. But that's why when we reduce, we're like, well, we can reduce here. The other items, we can't do without HVAC if HVAC is not working. If a roof needs repair, we've got to repair those things. So, priority-wise, what's truly going to allow school to happen versus not, that's where the decisions will be made.
Another question, but just as a pause here, just as a reminder, this body does not have the ability to line item veto or make changes to what will be budgeted or not. It's fine to ask questions. Just wanted to remind the Commissioners of that. Commissioner Herbert.
I don't know if anybody quite understood, but the school system still has the option of using their fund balance for that other $3 million. We're not saying you can't buy it. They can come back with another resolution and take it out of their fund balance.
Any other questions on the amendment? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote on the amendment, if you're in favor of the amendment, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-two yes, two no.
Amendment passes. Now, we're back to the resolution as amended. Any questions on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 723-2 as amended, signify by pressing your yes button. Whenever it pops up. There we go. Any opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-two yes, two no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-3, resolution appropriating $2,300,000 of adequate school facilities privileged tax funds and approving the related operating transfers for 2324 general debt service expenditures. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Erin Nations. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is to pay for the general debt of the school facilities privileged tax funds.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-4, resolution appropriating $3,800,000 of education privileged tax funds and approving the related operating transfers for the 2324 rural debt service expenditures. Proper motion made by Commissioner Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is similar to the one before, to pay the education rural debt service with privileged tax funds.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-5, resolution appropriating and amending the 2324 capital projects budget by $7,494,892. Revenues to come from the county general fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for the capital projects for the county, and it will be taken from the county general fund balance. We're going to do that instead of borrowing the money. This is something we've worked at for a long time or able to do, and so, we don't increase the debt.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-6, resolution amending the 2324 capital projects budget and appropriating up to $6,895,000 for major corridor study projects and the purchase of new equipment. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Erin Nations. Highway Commission was 5, 4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is capital projects for the highway, and it will be taken out of their fund balance.
Any questions? Got a question from Commissioner Sturgeon.
Thank you, Chairman. Director, can you explain what the major corridor study is going to be? And didn't we do one just a couple of years ago?
Can you repeat that, please? I didn't quite hear you back there.
I thought we did a major corridor study a couple of years ago for the county.
On going...
So, this is more of the same?
Yes, ma'am.
So, which quarters are we going to be looking at?
On the Arnold Road side of it. We actually did another traffic count. We had a roundabout scheduled for Southbury Chapel and Farmington area, but actually, traffic in that area had decreased by 25%. That shocked us as well, so no roundabout is needed. But the project now is focused on Arnold Road, at Arnold Trinity Road, as well as South Carruthers and Arnold Road. We did another traffic study on those two roads as well. Traffic had increased 25% on both locations, so probably looking now driving towards your traffic center, both of those areas. But, you know, decreased in one and increased in the other. But I got Chad Carley here. I consulted if anybody had any, you know, other question besides that.
Is there anything... Not at this present time, no ma'am.
Another question or two here. Commissioner Mary Smith.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, when you do these major corridor studies, like what is kind of the scope of the work that you do and kind of the outcome from these studies?
Outcome?
Yeah, like what is... At the end of the study, what do we... What have we learned?
See, now, we're moving on 840 and Arnold Road. We're going to put in turn lanes off 840 onto Arnold, as well as off Arnold to 840. We contracted some of that out. And Sessions Contract got the part on 840. We done part on Arnold Road ourselves. So, the next step would be coming on down to pay for Trinity Road and Trinity Road. That would be probably contracted out, as well as 96th and Arnold Road. But the South Carruthers part, we would do that ourselves within the house. But the mother three probably have to contract those out because we just don't have the staff to do that.
Okay, so, the study is basically laying out the plan on all the work that needs to get done and includes like what the traffic flow currently is? Okay.
Well, the study was actually done in 2015. This is just implementing the projects that were identified in 2015 and 16.
Okay.
Major quarter study was done, so now, we're just implementing the projects.
Okay, so now, this is when the actual work gets done, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that actually makes me feel a little better. It's like $6 million. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah. So, it sounds like we're going to spend a lot of this money on Arnold Road. Obviously, a road that's very substandard for the amount of traffic it's been getting for a long time. So, are those the three areas you're going to improve? The 840, 96th, and Trinity? Is that the plan?
South Carruthers as well.
And South Carruthers. What are you going to do at South Carruthers?
That drives a traffic signal. So, we redone, we counted, re-canted the traffic chatting and did it a few weeks ago, a month or so ago. And that area, as well as Trinity and Arnold, traffic rose 25%. So, which pushes the traffic signal at those two locations now.
Roundabout there, or what?
Not going to be a traffic signal.
Oh, a signal. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand you. Okay, all right. All right.
Yes, sir.
I have another question. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hayes.
You mentioned that the study was done in 2015. I know a lot's changed, especially on our wonderful west side of our county with traffic. So, any expectations of doing anything in the Fairview area?
Not at this time. It's no really hot spots down in the Fairview way that we have... People's come to us about, but, you know, that, like I say, the traffic has increased in the Fairview. I know that, but not at this time, no ma'am.
Okay.
I'm at the bridge on Forest Drive.
Any other questions? I see none. If there are no other questions, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-7, resolution appropriating and amending the 2324 capital projects budget by $3,295,314. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste and sanitation fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is just the sanitation, solid waste, capital project, and it will be paid out of their fund balance.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Landrum? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 723-8, resolution appropriating and amending the 2324 capital projects budget by $500,000 for the purchase of various parks and recreation equipment. Revenues to come from recreation privileged tax funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Sturgeon. Budget Committee was 3, 4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the same as the other. It's for the capital projects for Parks and Rec, and it'll be taken from the recreation privileged tax funds. It's also for improvements at Castle Park.
I have a question from Commissioner Mary Smith.
Yeah, that was my question about Castle Park. Just wondering if you could give a little bit more detail about those improvements.
Yes, ma'am. At this particular time, last year, we tried to concentrate on infrastructure with electricity and roads for better ADA accessibility, even though it's not 100% ADA compliant. We still have issues to try to solve with controlling some of the rain issues. So, we're going to spend a lot of this money developing a better parking system so that we won't lose parking spaces and things like that in the rain, which caused significant traffic delays last year because we were forced to give up quite a few parking spaces. So, we're going to be continuing to provide those infrastructures to be able to get people in and out. You're not going to necessarily see any real physical improvements on the parts of the festival grounds, other than just the parking. So, we're going to concentrate on that mostly.
Still see holding limits to the daily attendance, like you did a little bit to kind of control some of the traffic this last year?
Yeah, it's... You know, it all is really based on the number of people that we can park, and we did everything based on an average of three people per car. So, yes, to answer your question, the number of tickets that we are... We'll cap our ticket sales based on the way we are able to redesign the parking with an average of three people per car. So, we'll be looking at, you know, between 7,500 and 10,000 people a day, but all of them not being there at the same time.
Well, I know a lot of people appreciated all the controls that you put into place in that last weekend, so thank you. Thank you for putting that effort in. I know you got muddy, too, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, it was a lesson learned, but we did make dramatic improvements from that previous week to the last week, so...
Thank you for all you did.
And we learned a good lesson. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Hampton or the resolution? Yeah, a question from Commissioner Hayes.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
New flooring for the Hillsborough Rec Center. Is there any additional... I mean, that's great. I'm excited. Is there any additional improvements looking at in Hillsborough? I get a lot of questions about can we do more, you know, events, et cetera? Have more?
Yeah, the problem at Hillsborough is just strictly attendance. It's very difficult for me to justify spending additional monies at that facility right now when the numbers just won't justify it. And we did put a full-time person down there to extend the hours, trying to be able to generate more programming opportunities. We do have some group fitness classes and, but we're actually having more people use the facility through rentals as opposed to people in the community coming in and using it as a true rec center.
Better marketing on locals' part, maybe?
Yeah, we've met with, with groups, you know, from the, from the historic district there and the shopping district, and, and we're always open, you know, to continue that dialogue. But right now, it's, we're doing actually more business with rentals as opposed to walk-ins. You're welcome.
Any other questions? If there are no other questions and you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of resolution seven twenty-three dash eight, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three dash nine, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Health Department budget by one thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Revenues to come from fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Tonac Cliff. Public Health Committee was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This was a grant for the Health Department for the prevention of substance and tobacco use, also physical activity and nutrition and diseases.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three dash ten, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Circuit Court Clerk's budget by fifty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from the reserve account. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Aaron Nations. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for office equipment for the Circuit Court Clerk's office, and it'll be taken from their filing fees.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three dash eleven, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four County Clerk's budget by fifty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from the reserve account. Proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Ricky Jones. Law enforcement on this one was? Did they meet?
In the county court?
Okay, they didn't?
Just budget committee.
Just budget committee, okay. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon. Is that the case with all these coming up? We're on eleven.
Right. So that's not law enforcement committee?
Yeah, I think I had it down by accident. Explanation, please.
Okay, I'll do the explanation. It is for the computer and printing equipment for the County Clerk's office, and it'll be taken from the filing fees.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven dash twenty-three dash twelve, resolution amending the twenty-three twenty-four Juvenile Services budget in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Judy Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Law enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is just incorporating one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars into the juvenile budget from a juvenile services grant.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven dash twenty-three dash thirteen, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Health Department budget by one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Public Health met on this one, and they were five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Is a grant for the Williamson County Health Department, and it's for the installation of a playground in the Franklin State's neighborhood.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Sturgeon and Aiello. There we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three fourteen, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County appropriating funds not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the repair and update of the convention center located in Franklin. Revenues to come from ARPA funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Webb, seconded by Commissioner Streser. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Now, we're responsible for part of the renovations and upkeep of the convention center, and so this one point two million is half. The city of Franklin will pay the other half. This comes from ARPA because ARPA recognized that during the pandemic tourism revenues were severely reduced, and so it's for projects like this to maintain, not build, but maintain tourism entities as well as address some of the pandemic items such as giving them more space, providing for hand washing stations, et cetera, from the lessons learned during the pandemic.
Questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Next, we have late filed resolution number seven twenty-three dash twenty-six, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Capital Projects budget for a bridge on Forest Drive. Revenues to come from highway privilege tax funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Tonac Cliff. Highway Commission was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
This is the bridge that we've initially paid for the inspection and the engineering fees as well as budgeting from ARPA. But however, as you might have heard, construction costs are up, and so to complete this project, there's more money that will be required. And Eddie is here if you have any details, but this will be coming out of the privilege tax to pay the additional four hundred thousand needed to complete the project.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed resolution seven twenty-three twenty-seven, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Register of Deeds budget by one hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Morton. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
I think this was pretty self-explanatory, just, you know, they're amending their budget, typically what we do at this time of year.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed resolution seven twenty-three twenty-eight, resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Animal Control budget by one thousand, one hundred dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Motion made by Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. No committees took action on this one. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
This was one of those that we have a late filed resolution in order to get in for the state grant, eleven hundred dollars for veterinary services. This is probably, Andre, I think, will confirm this is for spaying services. Yes. Oh, this is from the license plate. The, I can't think of it now, but those of you who've seen those license plates.
Finley Specialty, yeah. And we think, we thank them for that. Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Williams, there we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed resolution seven twenty-three twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the State of Tennessee, Department of Safety and Homeland Security, and amending the twenty-three twenty-four Sheriff's Office budget by four million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Revenues to come from grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Aaron Nations. No committee took action on this resolution. Who do we have to speak on this one? Commissioner Paul Webb.
As you might have heard, the state has funds in the budget for SROs. It's supposed to be continuing funds. We have to request them through grants, and the sheriff or someone from his department may be here that can explain any details. But the, the way it was explained to us by Homeland Security, these will be continuing grants for SRO officers and their related expenses such as training, vehicles, et cetera.
Any questions on the resolution or for Sheriff Dusty Rhodes? I have a question from Commissioner Sanford.
Sheriff, as far as you know, does this mean we're going to get four point whatever million every single year, continuing on?
As I have been told, yes, it's a reoccurring grant.
And we're going to use this for totally new deputies or bumping up?
No, this will be basically to reimburse us for our cost of what we're paying right now, and then as we get additional schools, they will pay for that additional SRO, plus if there's any money left over for equipment, to apply those funds towards that equipment.
Question from Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, Sheriff, are we, do we have an agreement in place with FSSD to be reimbursed for the SROs we supply?
They don't pay us. This is coming straight to the county from Williamson County Schools and Franklin Special Schools. I applied for both of them.
Okay.
So it's coming straight to the county.
So they're paying, the state is paying for our SROs?
Right, yes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
That resolution reminded me that on each of your desks, you should have a Williamson County Sheriff's Office annual report. And Sheriff Dusty Rhodes tells me that he'll be here at the end of the meeting if you have any questions, but we thank you for, for this report. Next, we move on to other. Resolution seven twenty-three fifteen, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to clarify and amend resolution number five dash twenty-two dash twenty-three, amending the membership to the Williamson County Public Library Board of Trustees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Webb, seconded by Commissioner Lisa Hayes. Library Board of Trustees was seven, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
This is a cleanup resolution. The policy of the library that we had approved shows that all terms will end on June thirtieth of the term year, and so this just clarifies that in our resolutions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three sixteen, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an inter-local agreement with the city of Brentwood, the city of Franklin, and the Williamson County Emergency Communications District concerning the continued payment and reimbursement for a countywide notification system. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tonac Cliff, seconded by Commissioner Graves. Law enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is an agreement on joint cooperation for countywide communications district for high-speed notification, and it, it provides for reimbursement by the city of Franklin and the city of Brentwood to the county for those, for their participation in the program.
Questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Smith? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three seventeen, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a services agreement with Consoor Engineers LLC for consulting services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Sanford. Municipal Solid Waste Board was three, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This allows the mayor to execute an agreement for consulting services with Consoor Engineers, and it is for helping the landfill with the landfill containment liner that we authorized back a month or two ago.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven twenty-three eighteen, resolution authorizing Williamson County to participate in a pilot mattress recycling program. Motion made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Municipal Solid Waste Board was three, four, zero against. Budget Committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is springback mattress recycling pilot program, and it's for the collection of mattresses to be recycled, and it will start at the Nolan'sville Convenience Center.
Question from Commissioner Graves.
We know what the fee that they're going to be charging residents is, and will that fee be? Will, and will the fee only be for county residents or will it be for city residents as well?
Fee will be twenty dollars per item. So if you bring a box springs and a mattress, it'll be twenty dollars for each, and it will be for everybody that comes and brings a mattress.
I have a question from Commissioner Sanford.
Are we doing something to get the word out there for the county?
Yes, sir. The pilot program is not scheduled to start for at least two or three more months. The educational part of it, the signage, all the information stuff is going to be first.
About countywide? Thank you.
Question from Commissioner Jennifer Mason.
Maybe you can help educate me on mattress disposal, but if I were to drive to the dump to dump a mattress, how, how much would that cost me?
Williamson County resident, well, then nothing.
So in order to entice people to recycle, we're going to charge them twenty dollars? Am I understanding that correctly? And if I also bring a box spring, it's forty, but I can dump it for free? No.
This program, each item is twenty dollars.
Right, so a mattress?
If you go to the landfill, then it's nothing if you're a resident and you haven't met your five tons for, for you.
Correct. So a mattress and box spring at the dump, if, if I'm a resident, is zero. For me to recycle it, it's forty dollars.
Correct. Springback, I've talked to him for quite some time. I dealt with him before I even got here in another previous life. I don't think what he wants to do will work. But we've got to make some positive changes, and I am willing to fight hard to help him make it work. He believes thirty percent of the population of Williamson County will voluntarily pay to recycle. So I'm willing to give him that opportunity. If it works in Nolan'sville, then we'll, we'll go further with it. If it doesn't work in Nolan'sville in the first six or eight months, then the program, the pilot will be ended.
And just to follow up, this pilot program isn't costing the county anything, except we may have less mattresses in our dump, which is a positive. Is that right?
It may cost us just a little bit of time. We're not handling the money. He's coming up with his pay, on pay applications. So if you come to Nolan'sville, want to get rid of a mattress, first thing our center attendant would do is say, are you willing to pay for it? If you say yes, then here's the pay app. You operate that yourself. The center attendant looks to make sure you did it, and then you unload your mattress.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mary Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because thank you, Mac, for working with me on this. This, this gentleman actually had reached out to me initially, and he had, they already do this in Davidson, and it's been fairly successful in Davidson County for people wanting to recycle their mattresses. There is a, there's a nonprofit aspect to this. So I, I appreciate you at least giving him an opportunity to try this in Williamson County and just to see how it goes. I actually have had people say that they would be willing, but first is it going to the landfill to go ahead and let them recycle it and repurpose their mattresses? So it does seem like there are some folks out there that are willing to do that. I guess you see it as a donation of sorts, so I appreciate your help with that.
His employees, ninety-plus percent of them have come out of the judicial system, and he is trying to help them keep from going back. He's providing jobs for them. That's what part of this is for. And then the other part of it, mattresses is a huge problem for everybody. I have a meeting set up with the city of Franklin. They're having to pay at their disposal location when they're sending mattresses. So if they put a truck over there and do the same thing, that will help. The transfer station caught on fire, forced to July two years ago, mattresses and batteries.
Commissioner Lisa Hayes.
So are we marketing that thing, those individuals you were just talking about? Because I think that would go a long way in encouraging people to participate.
He is very quick to let you know what his, his role is to help these people, and he is paying for everybody, the marketing and everything else. paying for everybody, the marketing and everything else. It has not cost us one penny. Now, the advertising, everything that he's going to do has to be approved by us before it goes out, but we don't have to call, we don't have to pay for that.
So will Commissioners get, I mean, I guess we'll get a copy of that and see that? That'd be great. Worth a shot. Thank you.
Other question from Commissioner Mason.
This program fascinates me, and I like the intent behind it. If mattresses being dumped in our dump is problematic, and it sounds like it is, have we thought about charging people for dumping their mattresses? $30 to dump it, or 20 to recycle it? I mean, is that, if that is a problem for us and we're having to take them off-site and pay for it, is that something that's been discussed, is charging per mattress to dump it?
Williamson County, if you're a resident of Williamson County, you're allowed to dispose of five tons for free. And there's nothing in there that says what constitutes that five tons. It's just five tons, and you're finished. So there's a lot of changes that will have to come forth before we can pull that trigger, but I will help you aim that gun.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. There are no other questions, and you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-three yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72319, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding concerning the provision of school resource officers. Proper motion made by Commissioner Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Law enforcement public safety committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is a memorandum of understanding that concerns SRO officers for the Franklin Special School District, and I would love to have the sheriff come up and explain it.
Well, just a memorandum of understanding we sign every year with Franklin Special Schools. We have to do one with them, have to do one with Williamson County Schools, and then the state has required us to do one with the state. So I'm not sure just which one this one is. I just-
So we provide their SRO officers?
We provided their SRO since 2016, after Sandy Hook. The county commission voted to do that for Williamson County and Franklin Specials. So we've been doing it since 2016. Yes, ma'am. And that'd be the same as I think Ms. Lawrence was talking about earlier. They will be getting, we're not getting, we're getting the money straight from the state. It doesn't even go through Franklin Special School District. All right? Anything else?
Yeah, this is for both Williamson County Schools and FSSD. Any other questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72320, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to sign a contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Children's Services for the provision of juvenile detention services. Motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Law enforcement public safety was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is authorizing our county jail to house juveniles in our detention center that may be from outside of our county, and we get reimbursed by the state $178.90 per child per day.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72321, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with Emergia Trust to provide emergency medical services to prison inmates in the custody of the Williamson County Jail or the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Tonac Cliff. Law enforcement public safety committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is a resolution that authorizes a medical group of doctors named Emergia Trust to treat our prison inmates at a certain discount.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you are in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72322, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an agreement with the Williamson County Hospital District, doing business as Williamson Health, to provide emergency medical services to prison inmates in the care and custody of the Williamson County Jail or the Williamson County Sheriff's Office at a discounted rate. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Jeff Graves. Law enforcement public safety committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yes, this is authorizing an agreement with Williamson County Hospital to provide medical services for our prison inmates at a 65% discount.
Any questions? Seeing none. Oh, got a question from Commissioner Clifford.
Just curious, is that 65% regardless of who the inmate is? So for instance, if I have insurance coverage and I'm in prison, I still get 65% off as well?
Yeah, it's 65% for those that are not insured or their insurance will not cover while they're locked up. Some of the insurance come while they're in our custody. They're not going to pay for anything.
Other questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72323, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin concerning reimbursement for the purchase of software licenses and related subscription fees on behalf of Franklin's police and fire departments. Proper motion made by Commissioner Greg Sanford, seconded by Commissioner Tonac Cliff. Law enforcement public safety committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the City of Franklin so that they can reimburse us for field operation licenses that their police department uses. This is just a pass-through.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Landrum and... Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72324, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership for the temporary use of recreational facility, for a recreational facility. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Tonac Cliff, seconded by Commissioner Lisa Hayes. Parks and Rec Committee was 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 3-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is, Highwoods Realty has agreed to provide Williamson County temporary access to property to be operated as an athletic facility. This was previously the YMCA, and it's at Maryland Farms. I think this lease ends at the end of May, is that correct, Gordon? And this is for pickleball and tennis.
So, yes, ma'am, that is correct. The... We have some work to do before, if you pass this tonight. We've got to go over there and do a lot of cleanups and get everything in order to be able to occupy it. Our goal is to do it sometime in either August or September. The term right now would be that we would go in once we get the approval from this commission, and the mayor signs the agreement. The initial lease is in May of '24, and then every month after that would just be month to month.
Couple other questions. Commissioner Hester.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hampton. Would this be indoor and outdoor tennis courts available?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So if you're familiar with Maryland Farms, in the past, it was a full-service YMCA that had all the services there. We're only going to occupy the tennis courts outdoors and indoors. We're going to take some of those tennis courts and turn them into pickleball courts, which did not exist under the previous YMCA operation. So, yes, ma'am, that is exactly what we're planning on doing.
Commissioner Mason.
Pretty much answered my question. My question was, is this going to address the lack of pickleball courts that we hear about quite often in Williamson County? Will this provide some relief for those individuals that are desperate for pickleball courts?
Yeah, actually, what we're doing, we have, there are four tennis courts there now that are in a, pretty much a state of disrepair, four tennis. We're going to get those converted over with just new paint and convert those four tennis courts into eight pickleball courts. We're also going to take three indoor tennis courts and paint them with pickleball lines, which will create six. So we'll operate a total of 14 pickleball courts all day long. And to go along with the four courts that we currently have in Brentwood, those will be the only other pickleball court serving that part of the county.
And we will collect revenue through memberships, or how will that work?
So the, we're still, you know, working that out. Right now, when we finished out this past year's budget, just pickleball reservations on the few limited courts that we operate right now generated almost $150,000 in revenue, and those are just reserved through our accounts, excuse me, through the active net system. So right now, what we're going to do is, we're not really going to charge a annual fee because it really is not good business sense for us to do that, because Highwoods could actually get someone to come in at any moment to tell them that they want to develop the property. So we don't want to be in a situation where we have to issue tens of thousands of dollars worth of refunds. So we're going to operate this on a, on pretty much a single-use type system, and then we know that we're going to be able to operate it through May of '24. So we're also going to sell contract time. So those would be going to be the two ways that we'll generate the revenue. But we feel very optimistic about not only recovering the cost that we will initially have to put into this, but actually making money for the county.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drew Torres.
Um, quick question on the lease. Did we ask for any tenant improvements, meaning Highwoods, you know, put some money into this versus just it coming out of your budget?
Uh, no, we didn't really. There's a couple of things that they have to do, just from some liability standpoints. We met with them last Friday. Bobby was there with myself and other staff, and we did ask them to do a few things that basically are just sort of some safety issues, some private road improvements where they own a road. It's not part of the City of Brentwood's inventory. But, you know, really, it's hard to ask someone to make capital improvements on a building that they're going to tear down. So we feel like that the building is in reasonable shape. I mean, the YMCA occupied it all the way up until May of this past year, and the areas that we're going to occupy are the tennis courts and basically the downstairs restrooms. So we really don't see a need for any capital improvements on their part.
Follow-up. Commissioner Sturgeon.
Um, I just want to reiterate, we're paying $800 a month for this, correct?
No, ma'am, we'll pay more than that.
Oh.
So the terms of this arrangement are that we will pay the property taxes, which the building is going to remain in Highwoods' name. However, in working with the county tax assessor, knowing that we're going to be occupying the building for the greater good of the public, he has agreed to a very reasonable monthly rate, or actual annual rate on that. The big expense for operating this facility will be paying the utilities, and that's probably going to average about $10,000 to $12,000 a month. Which is pretty typical and not bad for that many square feet. To put it in perspective, the indoor sports complex that we operate with the pool, indoor tennis courts, and everything like that, our utilities there, which also include a pool with the pumps that never stop running, are about $18,000 a month. So it's right in line.
Other question from Commissioner Tonac Cliff.
More of a statement. I would really like to thank Gordon, thank Bobby, and Gordon, your deputy director, for the work you've put into this. I know you all spent countless hours in wonderful Brentwood, and I do appreciate the work you're putting towards us. Thank you.
You're very welcome. We just feel like it's going to serve the greater good, and I think the folks in Brentwood will appreciate this not going offline.
Commissioner Mary Smith.
So, long-term, because I know that they, like you said, Highwoods could turn around and, you know, tear it down, and, you know, we only have it till May. What does the long-term look like? Because if 14 pickleball courts all of a sudden disappear, what do we do next? Because I remember having a lot of people upset about that.
That's a, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to. Currently, we have an offer on the table with the City of Brentwood to partner for a, an indoor court facility, and that is part of the capital projects that we submitted in our budget this year. The City of Brentwood has tabled that. They've taken that offer and have formed a committee. In understanding, you know, the need to get an answer back from them before we go to bond, I asked that they would try to get some resolution on that, to make a decision on whether or not they want to continue with this partnership. So they put something out there, and their commission agreed to get the findings from this committee back by the end of October. If the City of Brentwood decides to go through with the partnership that was proposed, then yes, there would be a facility that we would work on with them. They would split the cost with us.
Any other questions? See none. With no other questions, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 72325, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning the provision of public comment. Proper motion made by Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Judy Herbert. Rules Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may know, the state legislature passed new rules requiring public comment at all meetings. And so if you look at the resolution in the body, you'll see the recommendation from the Rules Committee. It's very similar to what we use, except 15-minute time limit versus 30 is number one. Number, item number two, we'll have to provide a sign-up sheet at least five minutes before the beginning. That is a requirement that we have to provide a sign-up sheet, and then request to speak will be honored on the sign-up sheet, much like we do at this meeting. And during that 15-minute time period, we would use the same format we use here. Public comments on item number four, three minutes per person, no personal attacks. It comes right off our rules book. And then the committee chairperson, in this case, would have the right to rule any person out of order. This follows the outline set up by the legislature, and our legal counsel can advise you on any details if you have any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Before we adjourn, Commissioner Tom Tonac Cliff wishes to speak.
All right, y'all, it's that time of year again. You've gotten an email from me about volunteering for the county fair. We are ready for it, as it says, nine days of fun, August 4th through the 12th. But we also needed other parts of the fair. Those of you that might be listening online, please don't forget to go to the website and check. But thank you for those of you that have signed up, and I hope to see the rest of you sign up soon.
And with that, I'd like to also thank the Sheriff's Department and their deputies for being here tonight. If there are no other matters to come for this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.